Good evening. This is Monday, December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, meeting of the Berlin Planning Board. As a preliminary matter, please note that this meeting is being recorded and some of the attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that folks may be able to see you. Take care not to screen share your computer. Or anything that you broadcast will be captured by this recording. This is Tom Sanford of the Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members of the Planning Board are present and can hear me prior to recalling the meeting to order. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. JT.
Here.
Tim Wheeler.
Yeah.
Carolyn McDonald.
Here.
Thomas Andrew.
Here.
And Tom Sanford. Hi. With the quorum, the board present, I call this meeting to order at seven thirty-three P M on Monday. Uh, December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. This is an open meeting of the Planning Board. Which is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, two thousand and twenty due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Due to the outbreak of the COVID nineteen virus. Specific, specific information and general guidelines for the remote participation by members of the public. And or parties with a right and or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town of Berlin website. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convening using the Zoom platform as posted on the agenda. And identifying how the public may join. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda after their concluding remarks. I will invite board members by name to provide any comment, questions, motions, and or penetrating insights. Please hold all, hold all until your name is called. Board members. Please mute your telephone or computer when you're not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any responses, please wait until I yield before to you and state your name before. If a member wishes to engage in conversation with another, please do so through me. Taking care to identify yourself. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Thank you all for your participation. Alrighty. So. Where do we start?
Prove the minutes from December. Twelve.
I'll move the minutes from the twelfth.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Excellent minutes.
Seeing none, I will ask you to vote. Carolyn McDonald.
Hi.
Tim Wheeler.
Hi.
Jay Teach.
Hi.
Thomas Andrew.
Hi.
And Tom Sanford. I. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Alrighty. Next up, shall we dive right in?
Dive away.
Alrighty. The floor is yours, Carrie.
Hi. Okay. Thank you so much for having us and for adjusting the time for us so that we could attend tomorrow. Um, I wanted to just give you an update on some of the preliminary. Details we have for the next planning board or the for the planning board meeting slash. Community meeting that we're going to be hosting for the second phase of the village, um, the Berlin Village Plan. So we have Tuesday, January tenth at seven P M. And the eighteen seventy town, um, town hall, second floor seems it's works for everybody. Um, we have put together a preliminary, Emily helped me put together a preliminary or a postcard draft that we wanted to review tonight. To make sure it's okay with everybody before we send out. Um, we have a list of all of the names and addresses. Thank you to the Burlington Hall. For all of the people that we discussed in our last meeting that will be receiving a formal invitation to this. We also decided that we would host a hybrid meeting for anybody that cannot attend in person. Um, my plan is to, excuse me for one second. My apologies.
Emily, are you gonna need my laptop again? I can't remember if you actually wound up using it when we did the hybrid the last time.
Oh, I think we did use it. I would say definitely bring it. Always good to have a backup.
You got it.
Sorry, haven't had a dog interruption in a long time. Um, so my plan is to, um. Go over like obviously do introductions, go over the background of the plan, um, the territory that we covered. The what our main takeaways were. Um, I would like to be able to discuss some of the ongoing. Um, things that are happening in Berlin right now, the housing production plan, the rail trail discussions, the corridor study for Route sixty-two. Um, and then open up for a comment period, um, at at length. So that everybody has and everybody that attends has an opportunity to respond. Um, and then we will have some of our teammates there who will be able to help, um, take notes and capture all of, um. The discussion plus somebody that will be there to help monitor the, the online portion in the chat room. And then, uh, what I would was hoping to do was kind of, um, something I thought of earlier this week. Instead of doing an addendum to the village plan, I figured I could. Just incorporate all of the information that we received from the meeting. Into the village plan so that we have one complete plan instead of a draft in it and it. And an addendum, if that works for everybody.
I think so. Yeah, that works for me.
Yep, I like that because I think it, it's gonna mean more to people that are participating at this stage for the first time.
Okay, great. I, I, it's such, it really has come together to be a really nice plan and I. I do think the story map is nice, how it incorporates everything, plus. At all of the previous plans are linked in there. Um, and I think it would just be a really nice way to just have one plan moving forward. Um, and then Emily, if you don't mind, if we, if you don't mind, if we screen share, if you can just go over the postcards so that everybody's on the same page before we send out. Thanks.
I can share my screen now. Alright, can you see that? Okay.
Yes.
Yep.
So really, the only thing missing from this is we just need to add the link for the Zoom, uh, registrants.
Which I feel we will do on, on our end so that we can capture. Uh, the recording, if that works for the planning board purposes.
I think we want it that way.
Okay, perfect.
Will we be recording as well for purposes of, uh, public meeting law?
Hmm, good question.
Minutes we don't need to, right?
Yeah, no, but yeah, I'm not. I haven't been in town government during COVID and under that emergency decree, but. I wondered whether having this be a meeting of the Planning Board and recorded by C M R P C. Was consistent with that and I don't know whether it is or isn't.
I would think it is, Thomas, because it is a public meeting. We've announced it ahead of time.
Right, but I, but I meant the recording of it and where it resided, whether there was anything in it that dealt with that.
When we did, when we did our, our last meeting at the eighteen seventy, did someone from. Cable access come and film it?
Yeah, we had that all set up and then I believe it would, it was posted wherever those videos usually go.
That's what I thought, so.
Okay, that's fine. I just, I didn't want to get down a rabbit hole, but I wanted to be sure we didn't goof something up with this. Cause it, it will be an important project going forward.
Agreed.
Yep. Yeah, so we should just make sure that cable access knows that we're meeting in person. And that we need somebody there.
And they will be recording it.
Correct.
Alright.
Is that something I could do on my end to coordinate? Emily, is that, is that how you did it last time? Did you?
Um, I think they reach, I'll reach out to Brittany and coordinate. I can do that.
Well, I don't mind doing if you just, if you tell me who to contact.
Sure, yeah. Yeah, I'll send her you, uh, her email.
Okay. Does anybody have any edits they'd like to, or any suggestions for the text? Cause I, I believe if we. Play our cards right, we'll be able to get these out tomorrow.
So I can get the draft by using the Q R code.
Yes.
Can I, can we also set it up so someone can find the draft? Online without using a Q R code?
Oh, like a link to your website or something?
Yeah, cause I may, well. Cause I mean, some people aren't gonna be able to probably dial in on a Q R code.
Yep, that's a solid point.
But I know this has come up in the past. I don't know if it's been resolved. Do we have access to? Our page on the town website? Actually, Mr. Wheeler, I believe you live with someone who does.
He has access to our page on the town.
I believe he has access to all the pages on the town website.
So if he, if he does, he could.
Post the draft.
Post the draft.
You can post the draft.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll check with him. James. No, it's alright. It's. It was a joke.
Just tell him not to go anywhere.
On standby.
Okay, good. So he, he'll, we need to send you something pronto, so if you're gonna mail us tomorrow, right?
Yeah, we can mail it. What is tomorrow? Tuesday? We could mail it Wednesday.
Yeah, but let's, I mean, he's in the town clerk's office tomorrow in the afternoon.
Okay.
Um, but maybe I can get him to do it quicker.
Well, the link would just be my town government.
Right.
Um.
Planning board?
Page.
Okay.
And then the link to the document will be on that page.
On that page.
But on the postcard, we just need to send them to my town government.
Our, our site, okay.
Uh, oh, not, not my town government. I'm sorry. That's actually the wrong place.
Town of Berlin.
Town of Berlin. Okay, yeah.
Planning board.
Yes. I mean, I guess really we could post it on my town government as well.
The postcard?
The, um, study draft, the draft plan, yeah.
Yeah, and I, I'll ask about that. So the other question I had was, you, you have a contact with National Lumber that we don't have.
Yeah, I have a name.
So you, are you adding that to your list? Cause I just gave you.
The, yeah, I imagine that's the list.
Um. And just so everybody knows, we, we went from Berlin Center to. Evy Dewick, Berlin Center to Larry Sawyer. Down south. To Barry Ager. Down Pleasant to Stanley's. And out Walnut Past. McKay's, there are a couple beyond McKay's. Olive Oak, Olive Kendall. Olive Woodward, Olive Carter. West to. Nearly to Saint Joe's, I think. And then central. Um. I don't think I went to, we didn't go to Brewer Road. We stopped before then. But that's the circle. I mean, it's a little bigger than the circle, actually, but.
We included extras.
Yeah, so.
What's the total number? Of household or mailings?
I don't know.
Ish.
I would say.
Must be a hundred.
Yeah, I'm not entirely sure. I don't know that there's quite a hundred.
And there were fifteen businesses, I think, weren't there?
Hmm.
And, uh. Carter and Woodard together had a page. So what's on it? That, that's almost thirty.
Thirty-three typically on a page.
And then, uh, we had half pages for. Some others, that's fifty, sixty. Yeah, we're, we're, well, we're close to a hundred. Families.
My initial. Emily eighty at first. I think that's what I thought eighty.
Yeah, but that's household, so. We'll see.
So how do we gain the interest of people that are beyond the circle?
Well, I mean, it was the initial, was our goal this time to really include the circle and let them.
Yeah.
Have an imprint and then, uh.
Then expand.
Then expand.
Okay.
Yep. We just wanted to make sure their voices were heard.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Yeah, by the time we want to include the next group, we're gonna have to have our L E D signs in place.
And then are we sending?
Yes, so funny.
We getting Mary Arada to send a note to everybody on our town government list or are we? Holding that for another time? What's our, like, we, we talked about doing it this time.
I think we talked about getting through the January tenth. Meeting.
Yeah, before expanding it.
Yeah, cause I don't think the timeline, the times matched up with when the mailing was going out. Is that correct?
Well, we, Mary can send an email.
Anytime?
Anytime.
Okay, then yes, that, that's definitely the way to do it when we have the next meeting set up.
You want them for the next time?
Yeah.
Okay. Good.
We're gonna need to do some personal inviting. Get key people to come.
For this meeting or for the second?
For this one, for the purple, people in the inner circle.
Gotcha. So everybody's okay with the language so far? So does it sound okay to everybody? Awesome. Thank you, Emily. Okay, that's all I had for today, for unless there's any questions.
You want anything else in terms, you don't want tables, you just want chairs?
I think chairs would be the best bet. If we were having like, like we did for the housing production plan, then tables would be necessary, but I think chairs should do it.
And, and we need a screen?
Yes. Uh, well, we have that. Whatever, whatever, Emily.
I got it. I've got the screen on the stage, so.
Okay.
I can set that up and we'll put out. Fifty chairs to start with and have access to more if we need them and. Cross our fingers.
Yeah, and we'll be there early to set up.
You need a table for your operation off to the side?
Um, yes.
You want a table up front?
Yes, please.
Okay.
We're gonna have any way of knowing approximately how many people are gonna come?
Say what?
Will we have any way of knowing approximately the number of attendees?
You're gonna get people to. They're responding, right? If they wanna participate on.
Yeah, the, the people in person should respond to Carrie, email her. Hopefully, and if they want to participate online, then they need to register. And so that's how we'll keep track of how many people we expect to participate online.
Just thinking if the group, the live group is. You know, ten or fifteen people, then you, you'd want to arrange the room so that we're in a circle or something.
Yeah.
Right, as opposed to.
True.
Stadium, whatever, audience seating. We, we, eh, one more planning board meeting before this, don't we?
No.
Oh, no.
Okay. Okay. Could, we could split up the people that we know that are. Really important. To have and. Do personal invitations. Think about.
Sarah, wait, Emily, to find out how many people access the Q R code by chance, or is that? Not a, a thing.
Um, there might be a way on the actual like R G I S platform to see how many people click that link.
Okay.
Um, I don't know how to do that, but I can, I can ask Matt to see.
Yeah, and, um. F P C, which is, you know, one of the major property owners at the heart of this, I've been liaising with them and. They will have input and representation there. So not only the invitation made, but they're working on it as an organization.
Excellent. Thank you for that.
That is for tonight.
I think for my part.
I have some, yeah, I have some housing things if we wanna discuss housing tonight, too. I can keep it pretty quick, but.
It'd be good to get an update.
Yeah.
Do you want me to stay on him?
You don't need to. I just wanna make sure we covered everything for the village center.
Thank you. Alright, I'll let you, I'll let you guys go and I'll see you on January tenth.
Enjoy Tower Hill.
Alright, thank you.
Alrighty.
Everybody.
Good evening.
Alright, so I know Carrie kind of filled in for me at the. Couple weeks ago when I was out on vacation, so I'm not quite sure what you all talked about while I was gone, but, um, I know, I think. She mentioned, um, that keeping the survey open, um. We'll do that for a little bit while longer, the, um, not the first survey that we had, but the one that we created for the public forum. Um. So I haven't checked recently how many responses we have to that. We had a handful, but, um, I'll check again. Uh, to see if we've got more traction for that. Um. What's it I have? Oh, so I was hoping to get into, dive into some of the like goals and strategies. Um, we don't have to cover everything tonight, but I just wanna give you a sense of where I'm at. Um, so. Um, I put together a list of the goals and strategies from the existing plans. And I'm trying to get a sense of what has been accomplished in the past, however many number of years, um, since those plans were approved. If things are still relevant, um, if we wanna like update any of the language, um, or. Some things, you know, you check that off, you completed that task. Um, so I'm just gonna share. Um, the document that I created to give you a sense of this and then I was thinking I would maybe create like a. Go Google Doc, um, where anyone could kind of log in and add some notes that they had, so. Maybe some homework for the board to go and take a look at this, um, when you have more like on your own terms. Um, let me just show you. And then I'm thinking, once we get through and get a sense of where the existing goals are at, then I can. Brainstorm a few, um, new goals and strategies that, um, we could add to these plans. So basically I structured it as, um, here's the goal in this first column. Um, so this was for the housing production plan in two thousand and seventeen. The first one we had was. Continue to conduct, uh, uh, ongoing community outreach and education. And then there's a brief description about it. And just seeing if there's any, anything that's been done since then, um, if there's any public forums that have been held, um. Uh, posting information on the town website, anything like that, um. So I think this is a really good goal to include, um, that we usually include in, um, housing production plans and housing chapters of master plans. Uh, cause there's, there's a lot of momentum that's built during these processes and we wanna keep it going even though it's a five-year plan, so. Does this make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I think, I mean, it's good to look back and ask ourselves whether we paid attention to these objectives and it's. We're, we're gonna find that in some cases we have, but in a large number of cases, we probably haven't accomplished much at all.
Yeah. Yeah, the next one or that was secure professional support. Um. C M R P C actually just recently got a grant for a regional housing coordinator. Um, and we're looking for towns to kind of join in on that. It's, it's enough money for a one-year contract for. A regional housing coordinator and it would basically be split up, you know, ten hours in one town. Ten hours in another town. Um, they'd be essentially contracted by C M R P C. They'd be a C M R P C employee, but. Um, servicing the different towns that sign on, so, um, not sure if anyone in town is aware of that, um.
That we.
Exciting opportunity, yeah.
So we, we, there's some discussion, the, I, what are you getting for a response from other towns? You're gonna, you're gonna. You're only gonna add one town?
No, we're hoping to have a number of towns. So we've got a handful of towns, probably like. Two or three that are interested right now and we're doing a little bit more outreach to see if there's a few others that might wanna join on. Um, so we've been talking with towns to get a sense of how many hours, um, they could use a, a shared coordinator. Um, what kind of tasks and projects, um, they want this person to focus on. Um, so right now, I've been talking to Mendon. I think we've been talking to Shrewsbury. And another town and it's really in the process of getting kind of set up right now. We were just awarded the grant.
Um, the pilot, you did a pilot though with what? Grafton, Shrewsbury? Did they participate in something already?
Um, it might have been a different shared coordinator. I don't know if it was a housing one. Um, there was. The shared planners, um. But this is the first one we've done that's like specifically focused on housing. And Connor, Connor is really the one that's completely running this, so, um, if you're interested, definitely contact Connor Robichaud, um. But yeah, this is a, this is a, a first for us.
So. We, we've, we've got a relationship with the Assam Regional Housing Collaborative. They're managing our subsidized housing inventory. And. Uh, we contract. With them. For about twelve, well, I think we set aside twelve thousand a year. Then they contract with Metro West Development Corp, Corp, Inc. An entity out of Newton that. Works with the town. So for instance, when we had to do the. Um, the lottery for the new project at Highland Ridge, th- they helped. Us through that process. And coordinated, you know, with the state, so we didn't get messed up. Um. So I think the, the thing I asked Eloise was, are we, you know, are we? In need of more service and if we were. Where would be the overlap between what? You've Central Mass is offering and what we're already have from these guys?
Hmm.
And how do we justify the, I mean, we were contractually obligated for a while with these other folks. There's only eight towns that are being served by the collaborative, so we're, we get pretty good service. Um, and it's established and, and we're the newest town, so these other characters have been doing this for quite a while. And they've got some pretty robust programs in Littleton and Box Pro and. Hudson and all where they're doing. You know, first time home buyer stuff and. They're exploring a lot of options, so. I'm, I'm interested in what Central Mass might do for us, but I'm. I guess, so I'll talk, I need to talk to Connor, I guess, and then talk to Eloise some more and then we'll. We can form to.
That sounds great. Um, yeah, I'll tell Connor.
How soon do you think Connor wants to fill these slots?
That's a good question, cuz I think it's one of those grants where we have it for like, we have about two years or so to spend the money.
Okay.
So we're still in the having conversations phase of, of establishing this, so. The next like four or five months, something like that, hopefully we could get some things set up. Not exactly sure the timeline that.
Well, the other thing would be that we might pull CPA money. Out of housing for it.
Yeah. I.
And.
Daily, so the first year, yeah, the towns wouldn't have to pay.
We wouldn't have to pay the first year.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, because we already have the grant for the first year, um, but Connor's trying to set something up that's a little more sustainable, so getting interest from towns that. Would. Be interested in, in supplying their own money, money and town funds in the coming years.
So maybe. Maybe we'd use Central Mass's. Staff person to. Help. A newly. Appointed. Housing Trust to get its bylaws and procedures and. Work on that end of the equation.
Yeah, I think that would be a great use of that resource.
It sounds like it. Okay, good. I got an idea, then. Thank you.
We'll talk more about this, but yeah.
We don't need to, yeah, we don't need to dwell on this anymore. That's good.
Next one is amend inclusionary zoning. I don't know if any work has been done on that. To date.
Well, we've got the project at Highland Ridge that was forced to build some affordable units because of the inclusionary zoning. That's the first time we've ever had any units that were. Built as a result of it.
Didn't West Street have to, the West Street project have?
They, they dumped, they dumped their number back to less than. Six, so they didn't have to do it. It worked to, to reduce the number of units. It didn't create any affordable units, so. So that's still something we need to. Evaluate, and that, that's probably a good topic of. Conversation. With other boards and other town officials and citizens in general, just to say, are they, are they in the mood to see us? Modify the inclusionary zone, and so that. And, you know, we've, we've required. That the buildings, the affordable units be incorporated. You know, some people have said, well, you should. Allow in lieu of. Units somewhere else, or in lieu of payments for, you know, use by the.
I think the builder is the only one who said that.
Right, but I mean. Some people.
That, that is true.
So it's. Again, yep.
The offsite. Swap thing is being used in other towns.
Yeah, a lot.
All right, yeah, we don't have to go through all of these. I just wanted to give you a sense of like kind of how I structured this. And I can send this document, or I'll turn it into like a more editable document, where multiple people can, can edit, and you can see each other's comments and everything, and I'll send. That link out this week, and maybe in this third column here, you can like just add your own notes or comments or. Suggestions, anything like that, and perhaps at the, the next meeting you want me to attend, we can go over it. So then, yeah, the second area here is the goals from the master plan. So just so that's clear. Great, so how does that all sound?
I like it.
Awesome. Um, so that's pretty much where we are at. I have one of our awesome interns working on the. Data collection and update, because the most recent data from the American Community Survey, which is part of the census, was just released, so I just, I've. Had been holding off for that for a little while, just so we could get the most updated data. For including in these plans, so he has been working on that this week, so hopefully I'll have maybe some updated data as. Well, for the next meeting, I'll see where that's at, and then only. One more thing that I had, I know part of this project was discussing. Potentially having some like educational workshops around the Affordable Housing Trust. Um, how do we feel about that? If there's anything I can do to support? You know, getting an Affordable Housing Trust. Fun up, up and running. If we wanna have another forum, I know there's now this Village Center Forum coming up, so I don't know. That's, that's too many, asking too much of the public, feel free to think on it, too, but I just wanted to bring that point up.
I think I've got three people that are ready to serve on the trust, and so. I'm, I'm gonna try to touch base with them again. In, you know, right after the new year. And. If, if we can brainstorm about a couple other individuals that might join, then we'd have the five, which would. Mean that, you know, there might be an opportunity for us to try to work with them. You know, as sort of another step in the process that you're working through here, I, that, that makes. Anything we could do for them to help them get started and launched would be great.
Sounds good. Yeah, I'm happy to, to help with anything related to that, cuz that was part of this project as well, so.
Yeah.
I'll do some digging. See if I can find some good materials for getting, getting one of those, uh, housing trusts set up. All right, that is all that I had tonight, but we'll definitely follow up, and whenever the next meeting is, I'm, I'm happy to attend.
Well, should we assume that we'll have you on the twenty-fourth?
Yeah, uh, January twenty-fourth?
Yeah.
Yeah, I should be around.
Okay, twenty-fourth.
Doesn't, it makes sense. For us to. We, should we try to make our comments on your doodle doc? Before then, so we can discuss them at that point?
Yeah, that would be most helpful, so I'll send it out this week, and then if I see that people haven't been doing their homework, I'll send it out.
Send a reminder.
No, trust me, I need all the reminders, so, um, yeah, I'll, I'll send her. Reminder when it gets a little closer to that date.
Okay.
And then I'll also be at the, the meeting on the tenth, so if you have any questions or wanna talk about anything, then. I will be there.
Good.
Excellent.
Awesome.
Thanks.
All right. There's nothing else, I think I'll log off.
Have a good holiday.
You enjoy Tower Hill as well.
I'm so excited. All right, happy holidays, everyone.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.
Anything else on the agenda?
That's it for the agenda. Um, does the, does this help, Thomas?
Yes.
Okay. Cuz I know you were pushing for this meeting, and I just wanted to make sure that you got. Everything you needed out of it.
No, I mean, I, I, I just, I just thought we needed to know. What was happening, and I think. It wasn't. It was just general, I think we dealt with a number of things, how to organize it. What's going out, etc. So yes, absolutely.
Okay, good.
Yeah. Maybe other people knew more about that than I did, but I learned a lot tonight.
Okay.
Jay, I'd say. Any of us should talk to anybody in that. Circle or. That we believe are keenly interested in the center and tell them that they ought to attend one way or the other. Rather, you know, doesn't that make sense? Cuz.
Yeah, I mean, we can have a chat at some point and just kinda. Divide and conquer.
And Michael Sawyer isn't. In the. In the.
Property.
What?
He owns property in the center.
Right, but, well, he got.
The shop is in the farmhouse that he's restoring, or in the, in the circle, right?
Yeah, but I, I don't. Skip and Larry. Iran. But I don't think.
So Mike's, Mike's house is not, it's up on Derby, but.
Right, so.
Storing and moving to.
If you see him.
Yeah, I'll look him, look him up.
He's one that, that. You know, needs to be there, I think. And I usually run into Jane in the. Post office, so I'll. Make sure she's coming.
Yeah, she was enthusiastic the last time.
And Thomas has got the. Church crowd, so.
I'll try to talk to Ed at the store.
Yeah.
I don't know who we talked to at National Lumber, cuz it's kinda.
Well, she's got this contact. Outside, and then.
Well, she hasn't gotten through to them, though, you know.
We're mailing, we're, we're also mailing direct to National Lumber, but again, you're right, I, it's not like this.
It's gotta be.
Who's in charge, you know?
It's gonna be a general manager and.
Their. Mansfield or something.
Mansfield, right. I don't know, I might be able to find out, cuz I, you know, I buy a lot of stuff from them, I talk to the salespeople.
Good.
All right.
All right, would you like a motion?
Wait a minute, are you guys all, how are you coming on your Twinkle Tour entries?
I put a wreath on my front door.
Yeah, we, we put, we put one star up in the bay window of the Paces sixty-two, so.
Yeah, there you go.
I was shocked to go see my rental house at Brewer and.
Sorry.
Central Street, he went wild.
Oh, but I did get a fabulous Christmas tree from. Cordelia's this year.
So did we.
Yeah.
It was amazing.
Mm-hmm.
The needles are still on?
They are.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
I glued a couple back, but.
Yeah, that.
We took ornaments to the ornament hospital, too.
Oh, good.
And Nate, Nate helped us out.
Did he?
Yes. One of his originals. Needed a few arm repairs.
What'd he do, an octopus or something?
Yeah, we did the octopus.
Yeah. They, they grow them by, anytime they need them, don't they, and they have to deal?
Yeah. It's grown back.
That's right. My kids were impressed that you had the hospital all set up.
I'll second your motion.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, and I, as I've pointed out before, there's no discussion, so I'll ask you to vote. Callan McDonald.
Aye.
Tim Wheeler.
Aye.
JT.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
Tom Sanford, aye. Motion is unanimous.